Welcome everyone to the December 19th meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. Start with our script. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consisting of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. Oh, actually, longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call in residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for Select Board announcements. Reminder, nomination papers for special town election. The deadline to submit nomination papers for the special town election is tomorrow, Tuesday, December 20th at 5:00 PM. Now, that's tomorrow. Sidewalk choveling, clearing snow around hydrants. After this year's first snowfall, the town kindly reminds everyone to shovel the sidewalks along their property and to clear out snow and ice around fire hydrants. For additional information on snow removal procedures, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Citizen petition articles. Citizen petition articles are due in the Select Board's office no later than 4:30 PM on Monday, January 30th, 2023. In order for petition to be guaranteed placement on the annual town meeting warrant, 10 names, signatures, and addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. We cannot guarantee certification of signatures on citizen petitions if received after the end of the business day on January 30th. Forms and instructions are available at longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. Petition articles will be printed in the warrant verbatim, so citizens are asked to review the forms and instructions carefully. For questions, please email admin assistant@longmeadow.org. All right, we have public hearing next on the agenda. Is Verizon here?
They are.
One second. I will delay. Now, note for anyone following along, we have on the agenda Mr. Besett's email responding to Mark's questions on the project.
Mr. Vaughner, can you, okay, I'm going to mute yourself.
Can you hear me up here?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Who's this? This is Mr. Don Vaughner, Representative for Verizon.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. Can you tell us your role with Eversource?
Verizon.
I'm sorry, with Verizon.
Hi, yes, my, my name is Don Vaughner. I'm representing Verizon. And I helped design the plan to put this support pole that's going to take the place of the tree guy. I helped to put the plan together and coordinated with Al Besett, who was the one who responded to Councilor Gold's questions and requests earlier. I was the one who showed up at the original meeting but was not aware of the questions and asked for the meeting to be postponed if possible, and I thank you guys for doing that.
Okay, and I see you're on the email. So, Mark, I'll see to you. You want to go through the questions and?
Yeah, I guess just for the public's benefit, I guess we probably should go through the questions. I'd ask, you know, why is the pole needed and what changes occurred in order for the pole to be needed? I don't know, Mr. Vaughner, you want to go through the answers for that one?
Um, yeah, it's, essentially, the, it was a tree guy, the guy that supported the pole was going into a tree. And while those were common back in the 40s, 50s, 60s, we stopped doing that and we're putting them on stuff poles now because obviously trees fall. And this is the way to continue to support the pole line with, in taking it off the tree should something happen on the tree. So, we're giving it some attention to make sure that it stays at a safe elevation, the wires, the poles, et cetera. And that is the main purpose for this pole.
Okay, I guess I'll just parenthetically ask you, why is a guide wire at all needed to this pole as opposed to just a freestanding pole?
Support.
Well, none of the other poles in this, on the street have that.
From an, from an engineering perspective, at some point, you have to have some, some support along the way. I'm, I would venture to say if you went up and down the line, you're going to see some that are either tree guys or have regular guys along the pole line because they have to have some support. Otherwise, there will be some, some test, some lack of tension and some of the poles will be structurally unsound.
Thank you. I, my other, second question was, at what height will this wire, this guy wire be crossing the street? Route 5?
It, it would be at same lines, the same height as the wires are going typically. It has to be a minimum of 18 feet. I don't know what they are specifically right there, but it's going to be at the same height that the poles are at and that the wires are currently going right now. But a minimum 18 feet.
Okay, and I just wanted, I also asked the location of this, the new pole on the, I guess it's on the east side of Long Meadow Street relative to the street lamp pole that's there?
It's, is that, I believe that was, is that your question three?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to get my computer out of, sorry, out of, so I can read the answer more properly, but as I recall, it's going to be on the eastly side and it's going to be in the green space and it won't affect the sidewalk at all.
Right, they said, the answer said it's going to be on the north side adjacent to the existing lamp pole. It says approximately 35 feet distance from the other. And, and, and the final question you answered was, is this pole going to be in the, in the tree belt or on, on individual property? And you said it's going to be on the tree belt. So, I think those, those questions got answered. I guess my, my big question is, why does this guy wire have to go across the street? We're trying to eliminate overhead wires, but certainly wires that go over our main, main streets like this. I just don't understand why a guy pole can't be set on the same side of the street. Or if nothing else, then we put a guy pole where the streetlight pole is, replace the streetlight pole, put that streetlight on the new guy pole. So that we, instead of having two poles, we now have one, but that, it serves two purposes, both to have a streetlight and also to have the guy wires.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can answer that properly for you, except to say that I can tell you that the guy wire, the support for it, it has to be at a certain angle. So, the angle would either be on somebody's private property behind it to the west, or it would be across the street to the east. And that is, that is why it needs to go across the street because you start dealing with people's property, you're going to have to deal with easements, and people generally don't like to have poles on their private property, just like the town doesn't like to have them in their right of ways. But we need to bring this, we need to bring the lines across the town, so they have to be somewhere.
Okay, and thank you. My, my final question is, well, gets to the heart of the matter, and my, my sense is, having walked the area, that, that the, one of the issues is that this is a, you know, one of your wooden poles and the pole starts bending because the wires literally take a right turn down the street there and you need to pull it in the opposite direction. So, my question to you would be, what if we required the installation of a concrete or steel pole there that wasn't going to bend? Could that have the, the strength needed to support these wires without the use of a guy wire?
I imagine it would. I, I haven't seen, I generally don't deal with steel poles. We deal with wood. I don't know if that's necessarily a cost issue, but I can imagine you can come up with something pretty strong if you wanted to, but that's not something we generally deal with.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just had a question. As I look at the diagram, instead of adding a support line that goes across Long Meadow Street for 35 feet, why couldn't it go back on Longview Drive? There's probably, you know, some town land, you know, for the first couple of feet of that street. Is there any reason it can't go on the opposite side?
Trying to, again, I'm trying to get out of my, my view here. And I apologize, my view options, hold on. Exit fullscreen, there we go. Okay, so now I can see the map, sorry. So, you're saying?
Yeah, as I faced, as you look at the map, you know, obviously, the guy pole you're looking at is across Long Meadow Street. And what if you went 35 feet to the left on Longview Drive? That would, you know, we wouldn't require a wire going across our main avenue of the town, and it probably could support whatever you need to.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, offhand, what goes down Longview Drive right now. Are you aware of a pole line that's going down that way?
There is, but Tom, I think that, Mr. Vaughner, I think that the issue is, the wires currently come south on Route 5 and turn, if you will, down Longview. And so, there's a tendency for that pole to be bending to the, in this case, the northwest. So, they want to pull it to the southeast and, and, you know, that's why they're looking for something across the street to give some tension to the southeast. You know, that, that was why I asked.
Yeah.
I can't, because that's where the guy wire is now, and it just seems to me that we'd be better off putting in a pole that doesn't bend, like a concrete pole, and eliminate this, this, this additional pole, which is going to cause all kinds of additional trouble. Not to mention be another pole on somebody's front yard.
Right, so, yeah, I would support having a more rigid pole that would not bend and that would, could do their job without having a wire go across Long Meadow Street. I'd vote for that tonight.
Yeah, that, I, I can tell you that's not something we typically do. I've never actually seen that. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm saying I haven't dealt with that. I see what you're saying now about the pole line going down Longview and the pole bending towards 1072 Long Meadows property, which is, as you noted, the reason why we would be wanting to be putting it across the street, so to keep tension, so that it would stand straight. As far as a more rigid pole, I can't, I can't speak to that. I apologize, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I mean, there, there aren't, I don't know of any, there may be some in Long Meadow, but there's certainly many in the northeast and there are men in Massachusetts and many outside of the northeast where they just put in a concrete rather than a wooden pole or something that, that has greater, greater strength and rigidity.
Mark, I haven't walked over, I've driven by this and I took a look at it, but where are the pole, where are the wires that are going across now going? Are those cable wires to the house?
Yes, those are the wires going to the house.
So, we, so we do already have wires there?
Right, but there's no pole. And there's a light pole in front of that house also, and that light pole is fed from underground. The electricity for that light pole feeds it underground. So, there are no overhead, if you will, wires there. Yeah, the wires are going overhead to the houses on the east side of Long Meadow Street. You're right.
So, Mr. Vaughner, I have a, a more general question. What is, I understand you would want rigidity of, or to keep tension on the lines. What is the purpose of having tensions on the line? What happens if you lose tension, if that, if that one pole starts sagging too much? What, what could be the consequences?
Consequences would be the pole would start bending towards 1072 Long Meadow, would eventually be pulled into the property, and wires could come down and get lower to the ground. You're dealing with safety issues. Pole could eventually snap. This, everything always leads back to safety. Right now, the poles are at an adequate height, and we want to keep them that way. And we don't want them dealing with people's property, we don't want them dealing, we don't want the wires to come down and cause safety issues for, you know, residents.
I'm certainly not disagreeing with you there. What I'm wondering from as a reliability standpoint, there are some trees there, would the, I guess the tree wouldn't go, would, would the tree that's on the property on the west side of Long Meadow Street, would that be over these wires?
I'm not familiar with the tree, but trees are always an issue and they're always a concern. So, yeah, even though I'm not familiar with the tree you're talking about, I, I can tell you it is an issue. They're always a concern for us during any storm or ice storm, snowstorm, whatever. It is an issue.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. So, I certainly appreciate Mark's questions. I looked those over last week. It helped me understand the project a little bit better. Just more of a general question, in Long Meadow, we've seen a lot of, you know, down trees and wires just over, you know, decades and power outages. Have we, and maybe, I don't know if this is a town or Verizon, have we thought about along Long Meadow Street potentially burying these lines underground? And I'm certainly not an expert, but I'm not sure if that's something that we might be able to do, you know, along Long Meadow Street where we have a lot of frontage as well. So, I've already had calls from residents about removing trees along the power lines. So, just a, a question to Verizon, is that something that, that you hear a lot about? Is that something that Verizon would be doing, or is that, you know, you need to talk to the town as well?
Sure, yeah, I mean, that, that does come up all the time. People would obviously prefer, you know, the, the gist of the question, this whole conversation essentially is, you know, you don't want more poles in town, I think. And that's understood. The question is, how do you get stuff to, how do you get electricity, how do you get cable and et cetera to people's property? And it's either underground or it's poles, and you're dealing with cost issues. We already have infrastructure in place to make sure that the poles bring stuff safely, or stuff. You bring all these utilities to people's property currently. So, we're dealing with that infrastructure now. Could we move it and change it to underground? Of course, but the cost associated with that is, I can't even begin to put a price tag on it. You could deal with each street as you go all along, but the Massachusetts state law says that the towns and cities would bear the brunt of the changes. So, you can do it, but the town or city would have to make sure that that happens with, working with the utilities to make it happen. But the cost would be borne by towns and cities, which is usually why it doesn't happen.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
That brings up the point, though, you know, that Long Meadow Street is due to be overhauled, and they're going to, from one end to the other, they'll eventually be replacing and putting in sidewalks and everything else. And I don't know if that's something that we could at least explore, the possibility at the time when the construction, or when the road is going to be rebuilt, what it would be to put an underground channel, you know? I don't know. Lynn, have other towns ever done that when they've done roadwork, moved to underground or?
Possibly. I don't, I don't know for certain, not the town.
Yeah.
Mr. Vaughner, where's the, I'm trying to find the tree that this, the current guy wire connects to from this pole. Is it a dead tree or is it a live tree?
I'm not sure. It's, I mean, I'm trying to look at.
Because it's on the same side, it's on the same side of the street.
It may be.
Why don't we just put a pole next to that tree?
Probably for tension purposes because it, it's, if you put it on the same side as that tree, it's not going to be doing it justice.
No, no, is it the same side? Put it next to the tree where the current guy wire is connected.
Is it on the same side of the street? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I don't see it connected to a tree at all.
Yeah, neither do I. And I didn't when I was there. So, I, I, we're trying to look on Google Maps to see it. I mean, you know, I'm, my intent here is to figure out a way so we don't have another wire across the street with another pole on the, a lone pole on the, on the east side of Route 5. That's my goal here. And I'd almost like to ask Verizon to go back and figure out how to do that. Whether it's putting a, a stronger pole, putting in a guy wire close to the pole, you know, I've seen double poles where the guy wire that goes to it and then the pole, the, that second pole is anchored directly down into the ground, it's on the same side of the street. There's got to be something to keep us from putting a pole on the east side of Route 5.
And I'll just, the very first thing I did on this board was a pole petition. And I, I'm not, on a street where there's already poles, I'm not as opposed to having another pole, but it, I would rather, I hate to kick the can down the road again, but I would like us to explore if there's another possibility, if we can get a stronger pole, because it sounds like that's the way the, the board is leaning anyway. So, if we could get that, run that question down, if there's another possibility to replace the pole rather than have another, something put in across the street, I'd like to know that before we vote.
Yeah, and I'll just even use as an example, many years ago, we came, we had a petition before the board to put an additional pole between two poles because they were too far apart and the, and the line needed to be attached. And at the time, we said, why don't you just make the poles taller instead of putting in a third pole? And they came back and said, well, that would be too much money. And, and, you know, the issue is, we're constantly fighting aesthetics of Long Meadow against, whether it's Verizon or Eversource's deciding, trying to do this as inexpensively as possible. And I get the, the fact that we want to maintain these, you know, the safety of, of the wiring in town, but you got to work with us that says, we don't want proliferation of poles, whether it's a third pole between two sagging poles when, you know, you can easily raise the height of poles, and we gave up on that one. Or in this one, which we can say, let's get them something stronger in there and eliminate the need for a guy wire. And I think it benefits everybody. That's kind of where I am. I mean, I'll vote on it if you want to, Josh, but I'll vote against it because I don't think it's, I think we haven't explored, Verizon hasn't explored all the options.
Yeah, it sounds like we would have, I don't know, I'd like to know, just to answer that question, if there's another alternative pole material. And, you know, we all, we all pay a lot of money to have Eversource and Verizon in town, and I'd like to get an answer to that, and then I think we can vote. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not as much of a hardliner as some, but not pointing fingers.
I'm glad to be the hardliner.
No, but I, but I, you know, I concede when there's a good, a good point. So, I'd like to get an answer on that before we move forward.
Could we go out with Verizon and take a look at it together?
Well, you can, you can see it. It's, you know, I drove past it. You can go if you want. I don't know if there's anything to see.
Yeah, I'd support that. Just delighted to see if we can find out if there is such a super pole, so to speak.
Yeah, I've seen, I don't know if I've seen them in residential areas as much, but I know what you're talking about, a little thicker base and?
Yeah, it's a square concrete pole, goes up 35, 40 feet or whatever.
Yeah, so, Mr. Vaughner, if we can get an answer on that, if there's a different pole that we can look at, I know that traditionally you do the, the wood, but if there's something else that hasn't been explored yet, we'd like to hear about that.
Well, yeah, if, if I may, I'd, rather than get a straight no vote tonight, because the alternative is a pole falling down and safety issues, so I don't, I'd rather a no vote not be what happened now unless, unless that's what you folks desire. So, if, if I may, if we could postpone this hearing one more time, I can bring it back to the powers that be and ask about stronger poles on that side of the street and see if that's a possibility. I, I really don't know the answer to that, so I cannot comment. So, if, if the alternative is a no vote, then I'd rather postpone it and see what I can do to try and make this happen.
Yeah, that's fair. I just don't want to vote without all the, without everything being on the table.
Yeah, and I think that the, the options are, you know, as much as Verizon doesn't want to leave this guy wire going to a tree, leave it as it is, is option one, because do nothing is always an option. Put in a stronger pole or, as, you know, you know, Mr. Zwerko indicated, maybe put the wires going around the corner from one pole, you know, the one pole north of that, go underground, take it around the corner and then go above ground back to the pole to the west of it. So, you literally remove this pole and you, we're not telling you to put all the wires underground, just the wires that are, you know, connected to this pole, so it doesn't have that, that tension on it. I think those are the three options that, you know, I'd like to see. And frankly, you know, see what the costs, you know, I'd like to see. And frankly, you know, see what the costs are.
I, I, just till I understood what you just said, are you saying that a wire would go across the line of 1072 Long Meadow?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, from north of the current pole, there's another pole. At that, at that northern, more northern pole, take the wires underground, underground goes south to the corner of, of Long Meadow Street and Longview, turn the corner to Longview Drive, right? Underground. If you need to, you'll put in a pole there to feed the houses on the east side of the street. But, but essentially, go east underground or west underground along Longview Drive and then go back up above ground. So, you, you don't have the, if you will, the tension of the, you know, the angular tension pulling that pole to the northeast. That's all underground. Now, you may need a pole where the current pole is to feed the, to come up above ground to feed the, the houses across the street, but you don't, you won't need a guy wire.
Right, if I, if I understand what you're saying, I think you would need two new guy wires, one for the pole to the north and one for the pole on Longview, to support them.
But those would be along Longview or along Meadow Street, not going across the street?
They would, if, if that design that you're talking about is, is possible, yes.
Right. But it keeps them on the same side of the street. Like I said, the options are do nothing, beef up the pole or try something. And, you know, and I, I don't intend to engineer this in the select board meeting, it's just that that was suggested, is go underground there. So that's what I was trying to explain. And I don't know, you know, what's involved. Now, if you, you're gonna be able to tell us, gee, that's far too expensive, well, how, how much more expensive? Long Meadow's been here for three hundred years, we're gonna be here another three hundred years, so, you know, take the, take the cost of that and amortize it over the next hundred years, it's probably not that much more expensive, in my opinion.
All right, so it sounds like we're all, here we, our fine procedure, pushing this down one more time to get an answer on those questions. And then we will vote, unless I hear otherwise, but it looks like everyone's in agreement over here.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we defer this meeting till, till Verizon has some, you know, answers to a couple of alternatives. And again, you know, instead of just saying no, Mr. Vonner, my request is that you say, we could do it, but here's how much it would cost. Because the no is kind of shuts things down, at least the cost gives us an option.
Okay, understood. I'll, I'll bring that back and see if there's a possible redesign that, that we can come up with that will keep the lines on that side of the street. And we'll, we'll see.
Thank you.
Second that motion.
Okay, so, so I'll get, I'll get together with Mike then, and on, on a postponement, probably till twenty twenty-three, I imagine, at this point?
Yep. We won our next meeting, we're just about to vote on it, actually. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, unanimous over here, yes. So this is our last meeting of the year, and we'll be back in, we'll be back, got a couple more in January. So when you can reach out to Mike and let us know when you're ready to get back with us.
Sounds good. Thank you both.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for working with us, we appreciate it.
All right, happy holidays.
You as well. Next up, DEI committee appointments. So we have seven, we've interviewed seven people, and we have nine spots. And we're, so we're still hoping for more, but we, we can entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to, we can, I think we can do it as a block, unless anyone feels otherwise, to accept the, to vote on the seven members, or I'm sorry, the seven applicants listed on the memo.
Could I make a statement?
Sure.
So, again, after the death of George Floyd, communities across the country began to look at local governments and trying to make a decision about if there was any racial injustice along color lines, basically. And so, you know, our town took a look at this, and we put together a, a group to look at the town. One of their objectives was obviously to put together this committee, Diversity and Equity Committee. But as I look at the membership of this committee, it, it really kind of reflects a lot of other committees in town. And, you know, we do have one person who is Hispanic, but the majority of people do not look anything like George Floyd. And I don't think that they literally represent racial equity, which was the, you know, where this evolved from. And so I'm kind of at a quandary about doing this. I mean, if I was, if our goal was still, is still the same as it was when we started this movement, this, moving in this direction, I, I really think we'd better, be better off getting consultants to come in and look at all the different departments in town to see if we're meeting standards for racial equity. Because I, I, I mean, I, I think a lot of these folks are on the same LARC committee, which is a, a committee that's contributing lots to town. But I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just, I, I guess we just don't have enough people of color in the town of Long Meadow to come up with a committee that's really gonna be racially diverse. And so I wonder if we're, we're better off with consultants at this point.
We, we can't force people to apply, on one, it is an issue. I think one of the first tasks of the DEI committee is to, to try to reach out and make itself more reflective of what we'd like to see Long Meadow be. But I, I think that the, as we have configured the DEI committee, that looking at the internal, the inward facing is not necessarily the goal of the committee. So a consultant would be a separate enterprise, is that correct, Lynn?
Yep, and we're pursuing that already, that's through the MVP process. We have that consultant starting in the spring.
So, so the DEI committee is not intended to look at the town, because that, that's certainly an issue, that's something we talked about. But DEI is looking more holistically at what we can do as a community to, to foster inclusion is the way I, I see it. And is this the makeup of the committee that I envisioned? No. But I think that everyone we interviewed is really passionate about acceptance and, and making this a more welcoming town. And, but I, I do, you know, there, there's work that they can do right off the bat to, to try to reach out. And, and maybe, there's probably a number of factors to, you know, LARC, there's, there may be people in LARC who want to join, but it took so long after the task force to, to get this going, that they don't, are a little worried about what's, what's going to come out of it. And so I, I, I agree with your underlying point that this is, it looks like a lot of the committees, but I, I hope it, it won't always be. And I, I think that's one of the first things to tackle. But I, I, there's no doubt in my mind that everyone we interviewed is, is trying to, trying to help and, and doing their best. And I, it can get better, but the consultants, I, that's a different issue. And I, I don't think a consultant could take the place of what we want this committee to do.
I, I would also add, DEI just isn't about the color of someone's skin, it's also about how someone might identify and be, you know, included into our community. So much of what Josh said earlier, you know, we heard a lot of these statements, and a lot of the people that stepped up to, to run for this committee and then, you know, be involved, I mean, we heard their stories are very passionate. I certainly would like to see, you know, other members as well being included on this committee. We still have two spots. So I think, as leaders in town, I think we can, we know a lot of people, I think we can reach out and hopefully get some other people to be more involved. But I do think we need to look, look at this committee, that it's more than just the color of someone's skin, it's also how they might identify themselves and issues that, that people might be having trouble with that we don't really know. And we need to look to this committee to help create and foster a better community overall. So.
Anything else? All right. Do we have a motion on the table?
No.
No. I'll make a motion that we appoint Christopher Morris, Tammy Herb, DePreston, Saul Feinstone, Anne Marie Martinez, Stefan Platzr, and Beverly Sager to the DEI committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All is post? Three to one, Mike? Moving on to resident comments, do we have anyone online?
Just a reminder, if you're in the Zoom, please press the raise hand icon if you'd like to speak during resident comments.
Oh, I can't see on there, is there?
Yep.
Okay, great. Nobody's in person. Moving on to select board comments. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to report my ongoing SAG. I attended the monthly meeting of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. Two items that were on the agenda that are pertinent to us. First was, was an audit, a report on the audit by their local auditors, Powers and Sullivan or Sullivan and Powers, whatever, Jim Powers was on the, on the call. And, and, you know, I, I'll remind everybody that they had never found anything previous to the Purex audit. And once again, they said they didn't really find anything, although they did comment that some of the processes seemed to be improved. The, the, the other main topic was the elimination of the audit committee that the Hampton County Retirement Board is looking to eliminate their audit committee. And so they asked Jim Powers what his understanding was, and he said, I think audit committees are great, they work well with us, we think, I think they work well. And oh, by the way, Wellesley has an audit committee for their retirement board. And him having said that, all of a sudden, it was actually Tom O'Neill, who's on the Hampton County Board, said, that was of interest to him, because he thought no other retirement boards had audit committees, they were ready to eliminate the audit committee. And so they actually voted to defer their, postpone their vote on eliminating the audit committee until somebody talks with Wellesley to see how the audit committee can work. But Mr. Powers was very strongly in favor of the audit committee, and so there's still a, a chance that they will not eliminate the audit committee, although I will say that they were moving in that direction. The chair was gonna appoint a, a board subcommittee of two people to audit, to an audit committee different, from the audit committee. And he said, well, we're gonna go ahead with that. Whether or not there's an audit committee anyway, we're gonna appoint two members of the board, which means nothing other than they review the, the payables and, and all that before the whole board approves them anyway. So they, they don't really go in and do any audits. But, but the point is that, that this whole issue is still up in the, up, up in the air. Turns out that the chair of the audit committee, who is Paul Pesterzic, was also at this meeting. But they didn't ask for anybody's comments, his or mine, but it was interesting about Mr. Powers. So I'll continue to, to review and attend those meetings and see what's going on. We haven't been successful in having any interface. I will also note that the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board has eliminated all Zoom contacts, so unless you're there in person, you cannot participate in their, in their board meetings.
Well, thank you for your continued diligence for that. It's unreal. From, from your knowledge, do other counties or other retirement boards have an audit committee?
Yeah, I mean, Jim Powers said they do, yeah. These folks just didn't want one. Anyway, there, you know, it, it's, it's interesting that there were so, you know, all, I shouldn't say all against it, Michelle Hill's one of the board members of the Hampton County Retirement Board, she's out, she's the auditor, I think, in the town of Hampton?
Yeah, Southwick.
Southwick, whatever. But she was very much in favor of the audit committee, she remains in favor of the audit committee, but I think the other four board members had been opposed to it, so we'll see what happens.
I'll go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, just a small comment, I, you know, I, you know, in terms of, you know, diversity and equity, you know, I, I'm a big supporter of diversity and equity, and so it wasn't easy for me not to support this group. But, you know, as a select board member, when the, the committee reported, you know, steps that the town could take, I really saw us having a group of residents of color who could then comment, you know, on how the town was doing in different areas, including planning and planning boards and zoning and so forth. And so I just, I guess I just feel, you know, we've fallen short of that. And again, you know, I'm not gonna blame the people who tried out, I mean, I appreciate them making that step forward, taking that step forward. I just still see that there's a gap in terms of what we really need to hear in terms of, from people of color and their experience in town and in different political dealings of, of this town, just like any other town. And, and I've worked in the African-American community in Springfield, you know, quite a long time, and there's a significant difference between having a group of people of color looking at a, a plan or a program and so forth, versus having people who aren't. And, you know, I, I've been with a lot of well-meaning Caucasians, but I just, you know, I just don't think we can do the job that people of color can do in terms of, in this area. And, and that was the gap that, you know, I, I really think we needed to, to have filled and, and, but I know we will, we will fill that gap. You know, I know Lynn's committed to having some other, you know, consultants come in, and so there is hope.
I just, I'm gonna just address that briefly, I know we talked about this, I came up with one of the interviews, we don't, one of that, I don't want people to feel forced to have to give their opinion. And that's, that's, I'd rather, not, so I don't want to force the issue. If we can make people feel comfortable, make people feel like they will, they'll be heard, I, I, that's what I, more what I, we gotta start somewhere. And so that's, I, I, to your, to your comments, I just wanted to address that briefly. I, I would, for select board comments, I would like to just mention Homeworks, the energy audit company that we partnered with a few months ago. I've now heard of feedback from two people, they were not entirely positive experience with Homeworks. And if anyone who was listening or watching today, if you've worked with Homeworks, if you had an experience, or if you're going to have an experience, just let us know, we want to hear how that's going. As anyone who saw when we were discussing, we had a lot of consternation about what, if we wanted to partner, and I want to hear how it's going, if you want. So please let the select board know, just email us. All right, anybody else for select board comments? Dan?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a, a comment on December tenth. I helped lead a cleanup with Representative Ash, myself, Lynn, the Hampton County Sheriff's Department as well. We had a, a little project in terms of helping clean up the meadows where we, it was early in the morning, and we had a lot of support from the Sheriff's Department. We went down there seven thirty in the morning on Saturday, and we cleared, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly a thirty-yard dumpster worth of materials. So a lot of, a lot of the knowledge from this came from the serving on the committee with Conservation Committee, John Brestnahan also was significantly helpful, he was down there early. So really, and the DPW as well, can't forget about them. So just want to say thank you for Sheriff Coche, Representative Ash, Lynn, the DPW, and everyone who helped clean up the meadows, that we did a, a great job. So just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Dan. All right. Next up, we have the Town Managers' Report.
I have an update on the Eastern Hampton Shared Public Health Services. That's the shared health arrangement that we Long Meadow host and share with Hampton, Wilberham, and Munson. Since the start of 2022, the Eastern Hampton Shared Public Health Services team has coordinated and executed twenty immunization clinics across all four communities, including multiple clinics to provide vaccination to our homebound residents. They have offered various immunizations, including COVID-19 primary vaccinations, boosters, both high dose and regular influenza vaccines, and the pneumonia vaccine, to our public school faculty, high school students, fellow municipal employees, and those within all of the communities. It totals over eight hundred vaccinations since January first, it's more than double the previous year. And moving forward, they hope to offer more vaccination clinics and, that are even more accessible, such as drive-through clinics. And they'll be adding even more vaccinations, like the shingles vaccine, from what we currently offer. An update on the Waging Classification Study, this was funded through a Community Compact grant, and in October, it announced that we were successful in receiving that funding. This is a study of some town positions and two union positions. A question was asked at that October meeting by Select Board Member Gold regarding a previous annual town meeting warrant article, that it was approved to fund the study. The question was whether the funds would be returned to the town now that the grant would fund the study. And after reviewing warrant articles with the interim finance director, I realized that I had misspoke at that October meeting, and that funds would be, that there was a separate. was a separate warrant article of seventy-five thousand dollars to fund that study. And those funds now will be either returned to the town in the form of free cash or may be re-appropriated at a next, uh, at the next annual town meeting. So, uh, that does speak to the question that, um, Select Board Member Gold had asked, that, um, we were successful there, so it's saving the town some money. And in the Police Department news, Officer Paul Berry will be assigned to the Detective Bureau effective January first, 2023. There were three interested candidates, all possessing impressive skills and abilities. Officer Berry's experience, dedication, and work ethic were recognized as qualities consistent with those required for this specialized role. Chief Stocks made this assignment, and the change in the Detective Bureau is to fill an upcoming vacancy created by Detective Keith Pellerin leaving to join the FBI in early January. And in an update from Fall Town Meeting, the Attorney General's Office has approved the charter-related changes for Articles Twenty-One, which was the Housing Authority Article, and Twenty-Six, which was the General Code Charter change. We're still waiting for approval on the bylaw changes before we can launch E-code. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Congratulations to Officer Berry and moving to the Detective Bureau. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Lynn, I just want to reiterate my request for water, trash, recycling numbers for the first two quarters of the year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh, anybody have anything on department monthly reports? Moving on to old business, December fifth, 2022 draft meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve of the minutes of December fifth, twenty, twenty-two Select Board Meeting.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? And, uh, EverSource Western Mass Natural Gas Pipeline update. Uh, so there's three parts to this. Uh, first, we had the public, or the site visit on the, what was it, seventh? Oh, and Dan will talk about that in a moment. Uh, and then the public hearing, and then today, uh, the Select Board approved of a petition to intervene in the EFSB proceeding. Uh, and the petition to intervene is a filing that the town submits, basically telling the EFSB that the town will be affected by this, and we want to be a, uh, to have our voices heard and to be a full intervenor. Uh, so essentially to be a, a, a participating party in the proceedings, allowed to take discovery, uh, make motions, et cetera. Um, so, uh, why don't you go ahead, Dan, and talk about the, uh, site visit?
Sure, thank you. Uh, yeah, so I took part in the site visit, um, started at, uh, the Long Meadow Country Club, uh, point of delivery. Um, we then, um, we, we then went down through the sites, I'm sorry, the, the different locations of the proposed pipeline, uh, in a bus with, uh, EverSource, um, public officials from the town of Long Meadow, myself, Lynn, I think, uh, Walter Gunn, um, and then also other legislators and their staff were also present. Nothing was recorded. Um, we, there were some, you know, various questions, uh, some protesters, everyone was, uh, quite friend, uh, quite friendly, uh, to be candid. Um, we looked at the Bliss Street Station as well, um, and then turned around and went back to, uh, Long Meadow eventually. So, um, just some additional comments, really. Um, I, I, I think what was glaring to me really, and I shared this with Chairman Levine and Lynn, um, Town Manager, was, was just, you know, how close this facility will be, um, you know, around Hazardville Road, um, Whitman Road, Leetwood, uh, that whole section of town, just how close this proposed, uh, point of delivery would be, also next to a school. But also, um, the other point that I, I just wanted to make was how disruptive this would be, this project would be, um, in terms of tearing up all the roads and, um, the traffic trying to leave Long Meadow would really just be, um, quite, uh, I guess, uh, I guess, uh, a lot of traffic, to be candid with you. So that's pretty much, um, you know, my experience of, of the trip, but, uh, I'm glad that I was able to go and just kind of see the different routes that are being proposed as well. So, um, I'm not sure if the board had any other questions, but like I said, nothing was on record. Um, they did answer some questions, but it was about a couple hours, so.
Uh, then on the fourteenth, there was a public hearing. Uh, the, it was open, EFSB opened up the hearing, and then, uh, EverSource got the opportunity to make their presentation, uh, and then it seemed to be very well-attended on, uh, Long Meadow's behalf. I spoke, and then Nicole Schwannier from the School Committee, uh, Andrew Chastain from Energy and Sustainability, and then Chief Dearborn all spoke, and then there was, uh, Springfield City Council President, Jesse Letterman spoke, and then, uh, I think after that it was opened up and very well-attended, um, a lot of people spoke. Um, it was, uh, it was, uh, good to see, uh, people, uh, people speaking their, speaking their power, uh, truth to power, I guess I would put it. Um, I, we'll see what comes of it, but it was, uh, at least gave the EFSB a lot to, to think about and a lot to understand from how the town of Long Meadow feels about it. Uh, go ahead, Tom.
I thought in the newspaper, there were a lot of quotes from Attorney Canoff, right?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, he spoke as well. Yes, he spoke as well. Yeah, uh, and I think.
I thought he did a good, it looked like he did a great job.
He did, and Stephanie Berry, uh, wrote a good, nice article about it in the Republican the next day. Uh, and so, yes, thank you for bringing that up. He did, he, he did speak quite a bit. Yeah. Um, anybody else on anything for EverSource?
I, I just wanted to thank you, Chairman Levine, for, you know, your leadership on this. And I watched the, uh, the video, I was, I was present, and I just thought you did a good job. And just in general, I think you really led with, uh, this issue, so thank you.
The kids are out of the house, so that was why I was able to, to do it smoothly.
For all three hours.
Okay, I'd like to, if we could have a motion to take out of order, we'll move up to, uh, eleven B.
Yeah, I'll move that we take item eleven B out of order, the Democratic, Town Democratic and Republican Committees' request to waive these fees. We've got a couple of people here, so we can move that up.
Second.
Okay. And this is based on.
Do you want to go down the motion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All right, anything further on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. Uh, yeah, so this came up, uh, based on a letter we received on November fifteenth, uh, from Mr. Benton and Ms. Wenig, requesting, uh, use of the Adult Center facility without, uh, without fee, uh, for twenty dollars per, per hour. Um, and Lynn, you, you looked into what, uh, the feasibility of this, if you want to speak on that?
Sure, um, yes, so they, this is, um, these positions are elected pursuant to, uh, chapter one fifty-two, some, some, I don't remember the exact reference. Um, and given that, in, in conversations with the Adult Center staff, um, we, we would support waiving of the fees for this and classifying this group as, um, I think it's category A of municipal use, um, given that they are, are elected, uh, at a ballot by the residents of Long Meadow.
So, um, and I, I support this. I think it's, uh, a great use of our Adult Center space and two, uh, groups that are, uh, are happy to have there, um, with the caveat that we just wanted to make sure it's not a, a burden on the town, is what, or what I was thinking. Uh, so what would be the normal hours, the, uh, normal business hours where this would be par for the course for what the Adult Center's already doing?
So their, their nighttime hours when they're open to the community are four PM to eight PM.
Okay.
And it's, um, Mass General law, chapter fifty-two, section two.
Lynn, if we had a, another town committee, a committee appointed by you or by the Select Board using this, we would waive all fees for those committees.
Right.
So it seems that there is no, it, it, as long as the, the Town Democratic and Town Republican Committees are categor, categorized as category A, there's nothing more we need to do that they already fit into the proper category. It's not like we're waiving anything on their behalf. We're just saying we've properly categorized those two committees, correct?
Yes.
Right.
And the same goes with all of the other groups, that it's, um, based on availability of meeting space.
Yeah.
Just like you guys.
Goes without saying.
And this was something that came up a couple of years ago. I, I think I was either the chair when it came up, and I had asked the Democratic Town Committee to get together with the Republican Town Committee, and I said, you know, maybe the two of you working together could, could find a way to, to get these meetings to happen without having to have your organizations pay any fee. And, uh, so I was very pleased when I saw the letter come across my desk and identifying that you were, uh, it's elected members to your committees and that, uh, you know, so I hope we can move forward successfully. Cause I, you, you know, we turn to you all the time. When we have elections, we need folks from both, uh, both parties to be there to make sure that there's no, uh, feeling of favoritism and, uh, that it's a fair election and it's a really important thing. And, um, and you send us probably the best people you can to make sure that you're going to do a good job. So we'll, we'll appreciate all you've done.
So would, would eight o'clock be a, if you're using the Adult Center, would that be a feasible ending time for you?
Um, I think I can speak to that. My name is Dean Rovness. I'm, my address is twenty-two Warren Terrace, Long Meadow. And I'm also the vice chair of the committee. We had met during the month of October and also November at the Adult Center. And what we did, we changed our time to start the meeting. And so we've been starting at six-thirty, and we have terminated exactly eight o'clock. So there is no extra burden. We aren't asking at all for extra hours. We are just, they're just like everybody else.
All right, thank you.
Barbara Wenig, one thirty-nine Maple Row, Chair of the Long Meadow Democratic Town Committee. Um, for us, we haven't changed the time yet. Normally, we meet from seven to eight-thirty. Um, so it's something that we're going to put before the membership to determine whether or not meeting at six-thirty is in fact feasible, um, for us. So we still need to wait and see what kind of response we get on that.
I guess, Josh, my question is, what's the real burden on the town? That you just tell them to lock up the, you know, lock the door behind you when you leave? Or we have to.
Not in that space.
We have to keep people there, right?
Correct, yeah.
So we keep a, I assume, uh, somebody in the janitorial staff.
Yeah, we have that ability at Greenwood Center, which we've offered to boards and committees to use, and they have a key and they can lock up. Uh, not the Adult Center, not, and we wouldn't do it at DPW either. Not the two new facilities with sophisticated H-VAC.
So the requirement is that we would have to have a, somebody there.
Yes.
Stay additionally.
Yes. They, we need people trained on the, uh, energy management system that.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
Right.
So, so my pitch would be, we allow this during normal business hours, so everything have to be done by eight o'clock, and, uh, have it, you know, once a month. So allowing, uh, a, a monthly meeting, but not, uh, nothing beyond that. Just so that the space is available for everyone else.
Well, may I ask on that, uh, just a question? There may be occasions when we might have more than one meeting a month. Uh, when we come up to elections in the town, there may be special reasons for that. And as long as the space is available at the Adult Center, in past years, we met in town buildings, um, all over. We've been at the Community House. We have been at the building behind the police station. We have been at the old schoolhouse. And, uh, I can think of several other places, so we moved around from time to time. Our standard is one meeting a month. So we don't anticipate five, six, seven meetings a month. We anticipate our one meeting a month. And most of our members are quite busy, just as in fact you are, so that more than once a month becomes pretty tough. But I wouldn't want to absolutely close the door if we have something coming up, uh, and there is spaces available at the Adult Center.
Yeah, go ahead, Lynn. I guess my, my concern is that, that, you know, if the Conservation Commission or the Tree Committee or somebody else met, we don't require them to be out by eight, eight-thirty PM. I, I don't believe that we tell them, you're a town, you know, most people would say try to get to high school, cause there's a, a janitorial staff here later. But, but, you know, sometimes they do meet there, and, and we don't re, put hours of, you know, ending on them either. I don't.
At the Adult Center?
We do at the Adult Center.
So even those committees are required to?
Yes, Greenwood is available, uh, stores, libraries available, sometimes they're open later than eight. Those are the, or this building.
I wasn't anticipating putting any additional, I, I talked about this with Lynn before. I, I, yeah, this is, it's the same rule for everyone. So that's why we have to charge more if it goes beyond.
Well, then I think that's what we may want to make clear, that if, if you can maintain till, till the eight, eight-thirty.
Eight.
Eight o'clock time, time limit, we're good with that. But other than that, find another, find another place in town and, and, you know, I think we've listed all the, the other, you know, as well as we do, right?
Yeah.
Cause it does be, it's an added cost to the town that we'd want, want to pass on.
I understand that there, there may be occasion for another meeting in a month, but I, I, I don't want the policy to be, you can have two a month, because then it might turn into two a month. They, I, not to say that that's something you would do, but, uh, you know, we have to think ahead. Um, and if you do want to have another meeting, I, I think there's other available spaces if that does come up. But I, I just feel more comfortable being rigid from the beginning, so that, uh, it doesn't, not that anyone's setting out to abuse it, but, uh, if another group comes to us, I, I'd rather have a policy we can point to and say, this is what we genuinely do. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I just know from my experience with the Democratic Town Committee, uh, I was a secretary for a while. It's a lot of work to get a good meeting together, and I know it's the same thing with the Republicans, cause you want people to come and really enjoy the meeting and learn some stuff about politics in, in, in the town or in the state. Um, you know, there are times where state candidates, well, at least once a year, hopefully more than that, state candidates, you know, from Boston and so forth, will come out to, to meet people in Western Mass. And so it's really, um, you know, they don't want to have a lot of meetings, but they want good meetings. And, and sometimes it takes some flexibility to say, look, this is when we can get this person, you know, we're, we're going to end up with two meetings this month, maybe we will have, won't have one next month. But, um, you know, I, I think that's a, a reasonable request to ask for some flexibility with that.
Right, I think it's important to just note that, that we're now saying to the Republican and Town Committees, we're going to treat you like any other town committee. All of our town committees, whether they're the Energy Committee or the Conservation Committee, they got to be out of that building by eight o'clock. And if you can abide by that, you can use the building like anybody else can, and it's free of charge. And if you can't abide by that, you couldn't use that building even if you're willing to pay for it. We just don't want people in the building after, after eight o'clock, cause we don't have the staff for it.
That's right.
So it's, it's, it's not a fee or no fee, it's a, the Adult Center building is available to, that's what I'm hearing, right? The Adult Center building is open till eight o'clock. You know, if you can be within that timeframe, you're welcome to use it because you're elected, uh, elected committee member and part of the town. It's, it's that simple. And if you're not available, you can.
Yeah, just to let you know, uh, Mr. Peter Benton, who is the Chair of the Republican Committee, I believe, is actually in the chat, and he put his hand up, so I just wanted to know if you.
Sure. Take your break, man.
Please enter now.
And of course, that's why a lot of political meetings were held in local taverns, you know? They could be out there late, you know? We're trying to avoid that, you know? But.
No, but, but ultimately, you know, I don't know the usage of this room, but, you know, if this room's available and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, except, you know, there's long-term reserves for a lot of committee meetings, theoretically you could use this room or Greenwood Center or something else. I, I, you know, I, I don't think we're, we're, we're any longer imposing anything on the, the Republican or Democratic Town Committees that we're not imposing on any other committee in town. For me, that's the best we can do.
Well, the, the only thing I'm thinking is just, I don't even remember what group it was, but I was told that there was a group that was using the library to, uh, was having a lot of meetings there. And it became a burden on the staff, and I, I just don't want it to be. meetings there. And it became a burden on the staff. And I just don't want it to be something that, because it's free, it can get used too much. And not to say that you will, but it could.
I can assure you of that. And, you know, we've seen the decline in the number of people that do attend town meetings and attend hearings. And for our parties, we have the same issue when it comes to, of course, attracting younger people, new people to meetings, and so on and so forth. And Tom, I think your comment about how hard it is to get a monthly meeting going is correct. But we just can't say absolutely that it'll just be once a month. The times that we've been there, we occupied a room which is right outside the pool hall, you know, inside the pool table. And that's been fairly active until eight o'clock. And we've had ours, been there until eight o'clock, we leave, people are very nice, and we say, thank you very much. So I just don't think it'll be abused. And the point that we should be treated like everybody else who is in fact the town body, I think, is probably the one that at least I would feel is correct. Because we aren't going to abuse it. I would doubt if the Conservation Commission abuses it. I would also doubt if the Planning Board abuses it. And just have to trust us. And if we do abuse it, then we will be back here. And of course, you guys can go ahead and tell us that we have been in fact abusive. And it'll have to cut back.
Does Mr. Benton have any?
Yeah, Mr. Benton, I see you have your hand up. Do you have any comments?
Oh, I just wanted to comment, follow up on Tom's comments, that it is, it is a lot of work, and it's tough to get people to meetings no matter what. And we have a lot of people, our Town Committee is probably not unlike the Democratic Town Committee, we have a lot of people that actually go to the Adult Center on a regular basis. And it's well-lit, it's convenient. And also, as Tom pointed out, we have, we have guests coming from all over the state sometimes. And they're speakers. And that facility is just more conducive to our, to our needs. We are an elected group. We are providing a service to the town. And very much appreciate the attitude of the board. And we will, as a matter of fact, for the two meetings that we had there in October, November, as Dean so aptly pointed out, we wrapped it up at ten minutes of date, and everybody was out of the room, lights off, at eight o'clock. So we fully intend to follow that. And I'm sure as the Democratic Town Committee represented by Barbara will do the same. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I've been known to change my mind. Let's, let's give it a shot. All right. So if.
There's no action we need to take.
We actually take.
I think we need to find the.
Yeah.
You understand?
We don't need to waive the fees?
No, no.
Because it's identified as municipal.
Okay, yeah.
We don't need to waive.
Great.
That's the point. We don't need to waive the fees. We're the rules.
Well, go forth and conquer.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
All right, moving back to the agenda, to 10C, fiscal year 2023, updated Select Board and Town Manager goals. And Lynn, I'll just start off, I think you did a great job on this, assuming priority one is top priority?
Not necessarily. One meant, so not one top priority as in out of every goal, but I ran, I put them in buckets of one, two, and three. Yes, yes. So one is top priority, yes.
Yeah. But I think this is very, this is much more useful, the way it's done now. And I like the categorization as well.
So I'm happy to walk you through it.
Yeah, please do.
So obviously, the ones that we've already been working on since last fiscal year have carried over. The master plan, the long-range plan, that's, that's the top one here that you're seeing. And then going down the list here, I've, I've broken them out into categories. They were kind of all listed as individual goals before, but I thought it was important to group them based on their kind of area that they were covering. So you'll see the town and school facilities. We've got a lot going on there. We've, we're in the middle of the, I'm sorry, that's later on. So one thing I added that we did not talk about previously
Oops, I'm sorry.
Is the review and refresh of the.
Oh, boy.
Yep, that's why I wasn't working. That's the only flaw about doing it this way. So I'm just going to.
So the review and the refresh of the 2007 Townwide Facilities Assessment, it's available on the website for viewing. We have not done much with this in the last few years. But what I think is important is that this document was really comprehensive. It covered all the facilities. And we're seeing more and more needs arise in all of these places. So I put this on here. I haven't ranked it other than it being a three, because we haven't started anything yet. But internally, I'd like to work with the facilities team and also externally bring it to the Permanent Building Committee to start a conversation about updating that document. And I think we can do it in-house, at least as a start. So the plans for Greenwood Center, we just received bids for the architect, and those were ranked this morning. We will be awarding that contract this week.
What is going on?
I have no idea.
So Mike, the owl is muted now. I'm scared what happens when you unmute it.
Oh, he's out.
Okay. So we'll be awarding the architect contract this week, and that project will be picking up steam. And you'll see that later on when we talk about ARPA. But why this is, to me, this is one of our most important priorities, because as we grapple with needs in other buildings, I think if we can shrink our footprint, it's only going to help cut our costs on other, in other areas. I put the Permanent Building Committee mission on here. We had started this conversation a couple of meetings ago. So I want to make sure we don't lose track of it. And then you'll see throughout the document, I didn't go through and rate everything, because I thought that should be a conversation that we have. Because my priorities might not be the same as yours, and I want to make sure that we discuss that. Center School, windows and roof, you'll see this later on in the ARPA plan as well. This is all very much under review at the moment. The latest effort was that this was going to be an MSBA accelerated repair application. However, MSBA has recently just paused that program due to the cost of construction projects. Estimates and then the bidding have been so far out of line that MSBA just put a pause on this right now. So we're waiting for that to potentially get restarted again, and we'll, we'll keep working toward that. Do you want me to keep going through these one by one?
I think you can group them, or call out anything in particular that you want to talk about.
As you see, a lot of this is in progress already. So it's really important for us to keep that going, because we don't want to lose momentum on that and let a project fall apart. So when we get down to community engagement and outreach, this is an area that is new, that we added this year for FY23. And I wanted to talk to you about it either now or when we get to the ARPA conversation. But the first item there is to explore a mobile app. This was brought to me after a conversation with Select Board Members WERCO. We looked into it. Now that we have the new website, we're able to seamlessly integrate a mobile app through Civic Plus. It's, our biggest hesitation was staff time in loading content into the app. And after learning more about it, we discovered that there actually is no work for us. They just pull it from what we already populate on the website. So we think that this could be a really great tool. The implementation fee is higher than I was expecting. But I do have a proposal tonight in our later conversation about ARPA to fund it with those funds.
Is there any way through the app that, like, if your trash wasn't getting picked up that day, could you get a push?
Yes.
Yeah.
To specific streets or specific users, or would it go to everyone?
It would go to everyone.
Okay.
In the app, in the Civic Plus app. There is a way, if you're subscribed through code RED, to do it that way. But we, on the staff side, have to have DPW learn how to coordinate the, on the code RED map, to triangulate the streets so that it pushes out. So there's some training involved.
If it goes, that could be incredibly useful.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So that, that's a new section. And hopefully, it's been evident over the last year or so, that we've really, we, as in the Town Managers Office, mostly Mike and I, have made a huge effort in trying to increase the community engagement and outreach to residents, getting information out, making it easier for people to find what they're looking for. So we thought this was a nice way to try to add to that suite of options. And then we're still using ZenCity. So for those of you that remember it, it's a social media discourse tool that tracks public-facing social media for a lot of key factors. But it has a ton of functionality on our side, where we can see what people are talking about, and what issues are trending, try to get ahead of something, or respond to something that we might not be hearing about, because they're not calling our office.
So this would look at the open forum?
It already does. We've been using it for two years or three years.
Interesting.
Yep. But what it also has the functionality to do is launch a survey for us. So the police departments used it when they were working through their reaccreditation. They used ZenCity for their survey. And then the reporting function that we received after it was pretty great. And so we're looking to launch one in the next week or so regarding communication efforts. Because we're putting all this stuff out, but we want to make sure that it's what people want to hear about and how they want to hear it. So that's a tool that we're pretty excited about.
Lynn, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know this was, when I first was elected, when I was talking, I was like, I have all these people, just when I'm going to doors, they're like, we need to get to the modern society and up our technology. And I feel like this is just a great way for more people to get involved, whether it's committees, or, you know, we see potholes, or something you see in the neighborhood, but you can just go on your phone and, and submit it to DPW. So I just, I really appreciate, you know, your efforts here.
Well, people could do that with potholes now. They can just take a picture and send it. But this would definitely move us to that next level. You're right, Dan.
This worked, Tom.
So let's see, other areas that kind of jump out. We've broken out recreation into two categories, passive and active. It's really a refreshed way of us looking at recreation overall. We have the Open Space Plan, which really explores a lot of passive recreation. And then we are launching, we've already launched the Active Recreation Conditions Assessment. And so breaking it out into two categories helps us channel those projects to the different areas that they are applicable. So passive, for example, is more the Trails End, Conservation Commission, some of the Save Our Parks work that we've been doing with that community group. And then the active is more of the organized sports teams, the playing, the playgrounds. So we, we thought that was helpful this, this time for the goals, is to break it out that way. And a lot of these goals do tie to the ARPA plan that we'll talk about later. And I tried to really capture the goals that we've been discussing over the last year or two, because they've really kind of morphed into more than just the Town Manager goals. They've been Select Board goals as well. So I tried to capture some of the goals that you've individually brought forward. Tom, I know safety was one for you. So we have, we have that one in here in a category now. And then Mark, we have the Hampden County work still in here, the Retirement Board.
Great, thank you.
And then the one, I did add the traffic rules that we talked about the last meeting. And I also brought that up at the last Traffic Committee meeting. The group is concerned with the deadline that was put on for February, that the document is really a lot to try to digest in a short amount of time. And so they were hoping that the board would maybe give a little bit more flexibility in that timeline.
I'm fine with that. Nobody knew about the rules for 30 years.
My take on this always is, work on it as if February, the end of February were the deadline. Come back to us in January and say, here's what we've done, and here's how much more we have to go. Because if we push it off to, you know, I liken it to a term paper. You know, if we push it off till March, it may not start again. So work on this as a deadline, and come back and tell us how much great work you've done and how much more needs to be done. And I'm sure the Select Board is going to be willing to listen.
How often does the Traffic Committee meet?
Once a month.
Okay. So, yeah, tell us where you're at next month.
But there's got to be work being done in between. I mean, by, there's.
Some of the, some of the issue is that the group itself doesn't have full access to the document yet, because Ecode's not live. So they have the three-ring binder, or if you have a login to Ecode, you can see it. So there's been a little bit of a disconnect on who's actually looked at it yet. But we're getting there. We've made a lot of progress just getting it known.
The Attorney General doesn't have to approve our Ecode implementation of that, right? That was.
The traffic rules?
Right.
No, just the bylaws. And the charter.
Is there any, so when will that part of the Ecode be live?
We, we're waiting to hear from the AG's office on the bylaw.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, on the, the charter and the traffic.
Once, they'll do it as a whole package.
All at once, okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I think the goals are great. A suggestion I have is that we try to do a grid kind of characterization of these. And I know it's tough to do, but, but you have goals that fall into five categories. You know, communications, budgeting, cost savings, you know, personnel. And it would be interesting for me to see how, how these fall into what we've set for the Town Manager. And more importantly, you know, how many of these are working on each of those five major categories? Because if they're all working on communication, for example, then clearly we've got an issue with not having identified, you know, objectives, having to deal with community with one of the other, the other categories. And as a first glance, it may be difficult for me to put these together. And so all I'm looking for is if there was a column that said, you know, which of those five categories, and like I said, I think they were communication, you know, personnel, or, you know, budgeting and finances, that, you know, things. I think that would be, it would be helpful to me to realize that we have balanced goals, and that all our goals aren't working on, on one category. I don't know what others feel about that.
Do you get those categories, Mike?
I believe you're referring to the categories that are in the end-of-year review. Is that what it is?
Correct.
Yeah, there's, I think there's only five, right?
Yeah.
And they're broad enough that you can drive a truck through them. I mean, it's.
I have all those listed outside.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, let's see, yeah, if, if that grid works better, I mean, I, this is good.
I'm not suggesting it needs to be put in a grid, but other than say, you know, in this, in this spreadsheet that she's got, you know, just indicate through another column, you know, this, this addresses, you know, broader goal number one, two, three, four, five.
And then you can sort by that.
Yep.
The more information we put on that, the better. To a certain extent, I don't want it to be overwhelming. But I think that's a reasonable thing to do, so we know where our resources are going, if there's anything that's, needs to be picked up.
We could use color. Identify the five categories.
Whatever, Tom. I mean, you know, I'm just concerned that, you know, personally, I think that those five categories are all, have somewhat equal, give or take, important personally, I think that those five categories are all have somewhat equal, give or take importance. And if I look at this, you know, I want to make sure that we're committing resources into each one of those five categories. That's all.
All right. So Lynn, you can continue going. We have ARPA projects next under new business.
Great. So late today, I sent you a updated revised ARPA plan. And it was posted to the website late today, too. So this has really been a work in progress since December of last year when I brought this to you. Ninety-five percent of what I brought you last year is the same as what you see here with just some updates. And then there are some completely new projects, so.
So Lynn, can you remind us what the columns, what everything means?
Yes. Yep. So I'll walk you through the spreadsheet. So what had happened was September, I think of '21, I had put out a memo to departments and boards and committees with an application to submit for an ARPA funding request. Those came in. I reviewed them with the finance director to make sure they met eligibility criteria. Because at the time, it was a little more strict than it is now. The federal regulations have eased a little bit. And we prioritized it based on those meetings with people that had submitted projects. And I brought you that plan in December. So that's the column that says Town Manager Recommendations 2021. A lot of them had been partnered with either community preservation applications or capital planning at the time, like Center School Windows was partnered with another funding source. And between last December and this December, we had a lot of staff changes. And most notably, the DPW, who had just earmarks for buckets of money for projects, but nothing, nothing specific. So now we have a new senior leadership team at DPW and they've been working on a lot of projects. ARPA is how we funded the catch basin work because that fell under the stormwater earmark. So I've spent the last probably three or four months having departments refine their projects and getting some things just completely off the ARPA list because they've concluded, like pretty much all of the fire department's work has finished. And so that's why you see in that column that says Town Manager Recommendations 2022. For fire, those are all actual numbers. Those projects have closed out. So we have, the balance is what's left out of what had been previously funded. There's a lot of data in this or numbers in this sheet, but what's probably the most important for you is the Town Manager Recommendations 2022. And we can start there if you'd like. The Adult Center had submitted for a tent, which I had agreed to fund for an event that they had had. And it turns out they were able to fund it out of their own operating budget. So that's why it's a zero out there for 2022. The air handler replacement at the high school, I had brought this to you a couple of times in the last few months. We put this project out to bid. The original plan was to fund it just with ARPA and we would then not need to use the capital funds. Unfortunately, the bid came back at $733,000. So we, after reviewing the needs of this, decided that we had to move forward with this and needed both capital and ARPA to fund this, but we were still falling $14,000 short. So you'll see my recommendation is to bump that number to $390,000 to absorb that $14,000 increase.
This was voted on the last town meeting, right?
Last year.
For 375?
Twenty, yeah, yeah, the annual town meeting of '21.
Oh.
Yes.
I thought we had something else here. Sorry, go ahead.
It was capital from '21. And then this was in front of you for ARPA in December of '21. So this has already been ordered. It takes a while to be manufactured and then it will need to be delivered. The goal is to have it installed this spring, summer, when school's out.
But the price has been frozen now since it's been ordered?
Yes, yes. So you see, I still have the center school windows on here. I still have it funded for 2022, but I have an asterisk there in the TM comment column. Because we're still trying to figure out what we're going to do there and how we're going to do it. The windows are about $3 million. We need a roof. We had it phased in the capital plan, but the roof itself is almost $1.6 million. So when we started realizing these numbers late this summer, that's when we started really thinking, we have to think about how we're going to do this differently. Because we're not going to be able to afford this in our normal capital plan. And that's when we started pursuing the MSBA accelerated repair. We've talked to an architect to just help us with that application, but then they paused it. So I've left this $600,000 there just in case. I may end up coming back to you in a few months when we know a little bit more to ask you to do something else with that money and I have another idea for it if we don't use it for center.
Do we have any idea when the MSBA will restart the program?
I don't. Okay. So Greenwood Center conversion to municipal offices. So this project is, would be entirely funded out of ARPA. I have increased the amount that I had originally put there because some other projects came off the funding schedule here. And I've put that money towards Greenwood because I do anticipate it costing more than the million dollars we had thought last year. And it's also, the need for this is becoming more and more pressing just with a lot of stuff that's come up at the two buildings in the last year.
So where is this number coming from? Do we have a general quote?
Yes. So in August of '21, we had received a rough feasibility study with cost estimating that had been associated. So it was about 1.1 million, but that included a generator. We took the generator out, so that's why I had that 1,65,000 number. So I have bumped that number to 1.4 million because I think with everything that's happened in the last year and a half, it's more likely going to be that number. One thing we're going to be pursuing with this at the same time is a net zero designs for that building. Because if we do the designs, we can fund the work through a Green Communities grant. So we're working on that right now. Plus, we really like the idea of our municipal headquarters being net zero. I think it sends a really strong message and we have the opportunity there to do that.
Lynn, when is that conversion going to start?
The, to move over there?
Yeah.
We just looked through the proposals received from the architects this morning. We need to award that bid. Should be by the end of this week, we'll award the bid. And then we'll have a timeline that I can bring back to you. But as of right now, it looks like the earliest the move would happen would be July of '24.
Exciting.
Hey, Police Air Quality Assessment and Duckwork Cleaning. They did the air quality assessment and now the remaining funds will be used to clean the air ducts in that facility. The locker room renovation was taken off. It had originally been funded, but in conversations with facilities, it really is not on their priority list at all. And while it's something the police department would like, it has to fit into the facility needs for the rest of the buildings. So that has been removed. And painting at schools and town facilities, this is a new item for 2022. And this is on here because it's not a capital item. Capital Committee has made that clear every single year. They will not fund painting. And it's not in either the schools or the DPW's operating budget to paint. So we have, you know, facilities that get used pretty heavily, mostly schools, that really could benefit from a coating of paint, you know, in hallways and high touch areas. So this 150 would fund that work.
And that, that's qualified ARPA expenditures, expenditures?
Yes. Because of our, how we've, because we've, there's buckets of how you can claim the ARPA funding. We've claimed it under revenue loss, which gives communities a lot more flexibility with how the funds are spent.
150, I'm just thinking of my own house when I moved. It doesn't seem like it would go that far.
It won't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It won't.
College pros.
Yeah.
I assume this is indoor painting, not outdoor?
Yes, correct.
I mean, nothing, even still, paint's expensive, a lot of hallways.
Yep. So then the fire ones, you can see they're pretty self-explanatory. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But those were all green lighted almost a year ago and those are all pretty much done. The health one, we had originally put in $100,000 earmark for COVID, but we know a lot more than we did last year and we'll probably know a lot more next year than we know now. And so I feel pretty confident that $20,000 will be all we really need to. And I think that's even going to be a high number.
Is that paying us back for matter or?
No.
For future preparedness?
Future preparedness. We used a lot of that money. Or the goal was to use a lot of that money for COVID surge nursing if we had to do case contacts again. But DPH had thrown a lot of money at us because we had the shared services. So we weren't, we didn't need to tap into this ARPA funding for that. Okay. So the library had submitted for staff office space and HVAC replacement. In speaking with facilities, those were not prioritized on their end at all. So I have taken those off this list here. A new one here is Cooley Brook Interventions. This was also in the goals list that we just discussed. The work that's been happening at Cooley Brook, both in Bliss and Laurel Parks, has been from a lot of different sources, but it's all kind of coming together. And what this $17,000 would allow us to retain the Conway School, to marry a lot of those plans together and create some actual implementation projects that we can get other grant funding for. So some of this is just strategy. We've got Department of, it's like DCR, DRC, it's not conservation and recreation. But one of those groups had given us.
Urban Forestry?
No.
DCR?
It was for the dam removal work. We had, that study has concluded. And then the H&amp;H study that was funded through community preservation has started and that's yielding some really interesting findings. And so we're anxiously awaiting that one to finish. And we want to marry those two together and have Conway School prepare some designs for us.
So is this like what we did for a town meeting where we are funding, putting some money out with the hopes of getting grants?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Resilient Stormwater Master Plan, that's, that went out to bid and that work has already started. I think there was a posting today about it. Tye and Bond was awarded that contract and they'll be out in people's neighborhoods looking at culverts and storm drains and starting that work. The Stormwater Infrastructure Earmark, this one's really proved to be really beneficial because this is much needed work. We did those 35 catch basins or 36. That money, that money to fund that work came out of this earmark. And they have another 20 that they're getting ready to put out to bid to start in the spring. So that I think everyone has seen a benefit from throughout the entire town. They've been everywhere fixing those.
So that's, those are the ones that have been identified so far and we may identify more.
So 36 are just wrapped up and we'll do another 20 in the spring.
Okay. Great.
Yep. And then the remainder of that money can be put toward the outcome of that Resilient Stormwater Master Plan, the line above it. So it's great to have both the design money and then the implementation money because that doesn't usually happen. Electronic voting for town meeting, we purchased that. We had a $40,000 earmark. The total price was 27. We had some funds left there.
Did we rent those or we bought them all?
No, we own it.
Oh, we did buy them all, okay.
And so that one's done?
Yep.
Okay.
And then essential pay. So we had talked about this. Originally had a $100,000 earmark for it. We ran all the numbers this summer and it was more like $189,000. So we didn't have enough money to implement. And knew, I was revising the plan, so I have this back here at the amount to actually fund this.
How does somebody become an essential worker through the pandemic and how do you? I mean, is it a percentage of their pay? Is it a flat rate?
So in.
Flat bonus per person? What do we do about people who work then but since retired, all that stuff?
It will have to, so the criteria that we've put on this, some of it was some, with some guidance from you about the monthly allocation that we were talking about. The eligibility is based on what the federal government had declared for premium pay or essential employees. So we have a threshold there that we need to meet. Police, fire, DPW, anyone that needed to provide core municipal services that were not able to work from home. And I think the monetary amounts ranged from $100 to $150 a month for each month from March 2020 to June 21, when the pandemic or the emergency was lifted. And what was your other, you asked something else related to that?
People who are retired.
Oh. One of the criteria we did set on that was you had to still be employed with the town. The, the, yeah, I'm sure you can understand that the prospect of having to go back and look at people who had left us during that timeframe would be pretty exhaustive.
Yep.
The townwide water infiltration mitigation, I had originally funded in the '21 plan some of this work. In speaking with facilities, this was not a need that they had put forward. It was actually one department had put this forward and I lumped it as a townwide need instead because we had water infiltration at more than just one spot. But in talking with facilities, it didn't rise to the level of a priority for them. So I have removed this.
Where, where are we having infiltration?
We have it at Stores Library. We have it at the Community House. We have it at Town Hall. Where else? Those are the ones that I know of in the last year.
Okay. Are they bad enough that they're being addressed otherwise?
Yes, it's not every day. It's not every time it rains.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're still being addressed, we're just not tackling this?
They're known problem spots. And unfortunately, the fix is very, very expensive. Like the overall long-term fix is very expensive.
I'm shocked.
Yeah. Okay, the Hazard Tree Mitigation. So this one I've kept here. And if you recall, Davie Resource Group threw a grant that we were successful in getting, just completed a Hazard Tree Mitigation Townwide. They just sent their final report to the DPW. The DPW is waiting on some more information. But they're using that report to start this tree work. This $300,000 will address all of those needs, which was a surprise to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. That report will come to you at a later date. They were still waiting. They only had the executive summary. They didn't have the full plan yet. So that was, that was good news. And then the Townwide IT Earmark, I had not received at the time in '21 actual application from IT to use any of these funds, but I knew this was an area that we would need something. And we have tapped it since then. We used it to purchase the meetings, the TVs for town meeting and the mixing board for the audio in town meeting. My proposal is to use some of the funds to renew the ZenCity agreement for this next year. That will fund those four surveys that we want to do. One of them is the long-range plan one. And then just the overall ZenCity work they do for us. And then this is also where I was proposing to fund the mobile app out of. And that still leaves a balance of $65,000 for IT needs.
What is the broadband study?
So this is one that we had discussed maybe a year and a half ago. There's just been an informal conversation about fiber to the home or town Wi-Fi.
This is right when I joined, we were talking about this.
And so my thought had been this earmark could be used to fund that study, to hire a consultant.
Do you have any idea how much that would run?
To install it or to?
No, to install it.
To do the study?
To do the study.
I believe that the 65 would more than cover it.
Okay. Interesting idea.
Lynn, information about ZenCity and Civic Plus app, is that something we could be, could be sent to the board members? So I could just look at it? Because I haven't seen anything written out on that.
Sure. So the app is brand new. I haven't talked to you about it before. ZenCity I've talked to you about several times because we've been using it since 2020.
Yeah, I just don't think I've seen any written material on it.
Sure.
I'm too good, I learned.
Yep, I can send you something.
Yeah, some written stuff and then the Civic Plus. Yeah, some written stuff and then the Civic Plus mobile app. Just see what they offer. I'd like to know what those are.
Yep.
But that'd be great.
Yep. And then the William Goldways Fund, they had made a request to fund some of the needs for applications that have come in. So I did put this thirty-five thousand earmark there. I think that it's possible that that may actually be too much because it's not a situation where the money can just go to the fund and they can just add it to their reserves. It actually has to be, it has to come in as an application to the town and we would have to cut the check to the applicant. And these funds need to be earmarked by the end of twenty-four. And then fully closed out by twenty-six. And I think, so that number may change, but I do think it's a need that we can address, but I don't know that the amount is going to be that high.
The Goldway Fund, can you, can you just remind us what, again, that money is used for and how it contrasts with the money that we allocate to the Adult Center for Home Improvement?
Sure. Yep. So the Goldways Fund is for the Long Meadow Worthy Poor, essentially. It's a old, old terminology, but there's financial thresholds that have to be met in order to be eligible. And it's generally a one-time application. So you fall on a hardship, you apply to them and they will hear your case and potentially award you the funds to help you out in that one-time situation. It's not a reoccurring thing. The Adult Center Home Modification Program is for, it has very specific criteria. It's run through the Adult Center and I believe you either need to be a senior or I'm pretty sure you have to be a senior. I don't have as much detail on that one. And that's only for home modifications. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know this is a lot of information tonight and I don't need you to vote on this tonight, but I would like a vote because I, I'm viewing this as really one of our final plans. It's possible I could come back to you in six months for that Center School money. But we're really running out of time to give the green light on the rest of this stuff.
So the Center School money, I understand it's in flux, what we're going to do. And knowing that you have something else in the back of your mind. If we're going to vote and allocate this money, what happens if we do have to go a different route? Or is that all this, can we always just apply the six hundred thousand to some portion of that?
Yes. So this doesn't, your vote is really just an endorsement that the plan that I've prioritized you support. It doesn't mean anything, it doesn't mean we're going to go spend six hundred thousand on Center School windows this week. It just really gives me a green light to say, okay, I can move ahead with the Cooley Brook Conway School work. We can sign a contract with them because we have a funding source, that type of thing. But other than, you know, just an endorsement of what I've presented you, that's really all it is. And I'm, I'm open to feedback. I'm open to changes if you don't like the way something looks and you want to do something different.
Is there anything that would be ARPA eligible that you're aware of that you didn't include on this list?
Yeah. There is one lingering project that I need to find some funding for and that's the electric vehicle charging stations here at the high school. It's nineteen thousand dollars that we need to fund in order to buy those chargers. The grant covered sixty percent of the total cost. And now we need to come up with the other forty percent. EverSource already did the infrastructure work and we're just waiting to find that nineteen thousand to order the chargers. So that's, that's something I would have or could have put in here.
Step my foot in any chargers.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I think my, my only hesitation is on the, the painting. I just, I, I feel like that's, that's a pretty big ticket item that I, I see it's important. I just, I worry that it's not enough. But I, I may just be thinking of residential costs on painting. I don't know. But generally, I think your big tick items, especially the Stormwater Infrastructure Earmark, that's something that we hear a lot about and it's a very noticeable thing that people can see the town getting better through that. So I, I think that that's, I'm pleased that that is such a high priority on here. And then the other big one, really big one is Greenwood. And I think that that's something that is also important to, to do to, to give us a, a better facility and to, to use that space in a a better manner than it's currently being used.
Yeah, the one that sticks out to me was and it's probably because I was just, I met with the chief last week, Chief of Police Stocks and the locker room, I'm just, you know, we did a tour of, of the locker room and just last week he was, you know, we're seeing more and more, more and more police officers leaving just for other opportunities. And I know he has his staffing concerns as well, like other departments. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there's something that we could do to potentially help with that, the renovation of, of the locker rooms. They're in pretty poor shape. And I'm just, I'm, I'm not really sure where we could pull the money from, but I know that's something that I would like to see. I know the, the police officers would also appreciate that.
I really wasn't, because we just got this late today. Prepared to speak about it much. Like Josh, I, painting just threw me for a loop when I saw it there. I understand this is probably making up for the last ten, fifteen years. We didn't do any painting at all, but paintings need to, needs to get budgeted and not come out of one-time fees. The other thing is, you know, I, I guess I'm looking for opportunities to use ARPA funds to, to supplement or to replace town funds that we would possibly be using anyway. And so to the extent that some of the facilities have that, it's, it's beneficial. Unfortunately, like the air handlers, price doubled and so we're still using our money plus, plus the ARPA money and, and Center School is a roll of the dice. I don't know what that is, but I think that there's a personal desire to see if we can't go after those areas where, you know, ARPA money is truly saving our town residents' money as well as doing critical things. And I think Josh was right, pointing out the sewer infrastr, you know, replacing storm sewers was, repairing storm sewers was one of the most, you know, well-received things that we spent money on. And we'd be doing it one way or the other. So I encourage more of that than anything else.
So I, I would like you to, I don't want to ask you to vote on it tonight because I do think you should spend some time with it. There's three areas that I think if you wanted to think about taking money from somewhere, it could be the painting. We could look at reducing that amount. And I can certainly make sure I work with DPW as they develop their budget to start incorporating some more ongoing painting efforts. So you could look at reducing that amount. The other areas are Center School windows. Again, I don't really know what the six hundred will go for at this point. And then this won't be widely liked at Town Hall, but the essential pay. We could reduce that number as well. In the survey that I, that has been circulating in cities and towns, that amount. I'm sorry, that a lot of communities are not doing essential pay. Some are and those did them, did it pretty quickly, right away. And some did not, did not. And some put those funds to use in other ways.
Do you think that's because of inflation that they're shying away from that or?
No, I think that, I, I can't speak for what they're doing, but, you know, as I looked at this plan, what stuck out to me is that the needs are so great for just overall our infrastructure work, whether it's buildings or roads or, or, you know, water lines, things like that. That's where I had a hard time allocating this money.
I, I just, one other thing here. In terms of municipal offices, you know, going to Greenwood and, you know, is there ever a plan, like if the municipal offices are going to be there permanently, would we consider doing something on the outside of the building so it would look more like a municipal building?
At Greenwood?
At Greenwood, yeah. I mean, because right now it looks like an old grammar school.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, we had, there's, there's a lot of eyes on that area as we look forward. It's one of our locations that we're looking for our MS four plans. We have to have four spots in town that have municipal stormwater green infrastructure. We don't have any right now. Our permit requires that we have four and that's one area that we're looking at. So that would change some of the landscape there. We've also discussed it in the solar working group as a possible parking lot solar canopy. And then there's also been conversations about changing the, adding an entry vestibule where the green, where the Adult Center wing was, so that it created almost a safety barrier to if we ever had a situation where we had a lockdown, we had a, somewhere to lock. And also if we're ever in a pandemic again where we can't do transactions with people, it gave us a barrier where we could have stuff left for people or, you know, potentially have a sliding window there or something. So yes, I do think a lot of that will change.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, the Adult Center looks spectacular. And then you look at, say, well, here's the municipal office. And it, you know, it'd be nice if we could get those to dressed up a little bit.
Yep.
You know, thanks.
Lynn, in terms of, I'm not going to say guidance, but you know, we used to look at things like capital, many of these are capital, you know, projects is, you know, and I'm going to address the painting specifically. You know, if we deferred the painting through budgeting, you know, the walls aren't going to fall down because they're not painted. You know, on the other hand, if, you know, if we defer the air handler's replacement for some reason, they'll, they'll break and they'll, you know, so things will get worse and more expensive. And I think as we look at that, that's a potential way for us to look at the essential or less essential things here is, you know, what is it that if we don't do it, we're, it's just going to grow greater than the inflation cost of doing it because the issue, the problem gets worse. And there are a few here like Stormwater Infrastructure where things continue to collapse and get worse and things like that. For me, something like, painting is the aesthetic and unless you're in a situation where the walls are, it's an outside wall and you're going to start getting the windows to fall apart and corrode and break, you know, that, I, that's kind of the eye that I'm going to take to some of these things is in terms of if we need to defer things or if we need to move other things up, more important, more higher priority.
I wasn't anticipating voting tonight, so anything else from anybody? All right, next up on the agenda, we have delegate for the MIAA Annual Business Luncheon, which is January twenty first. We usually send the representative to vote at the lunch. It is usually the chair. I am unavailable that day. I understand Mark and Tom will be there.
I, I go to the luncheon every, I think Tom does too every, we haven't had the meeting for the last couple of years, but.
I think I, as the vice chair, I would.
It's not a big deal.
You take a card and all that. If my chair can do it, if he, if something's wrong with his arm, I'll call him.
I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, great. And we have a request for extension of hours from LCC, Long Meadow Country Club. I would like to stay open till twelve-thirty on New Year's Eve or into New Year's Day. So Lynn, you want to explain the, the guidelines on extensions here?
Yeah, this is a, this is new. We've never had this before.
Yeah, I was going to ask, is this coming up every year or something?
I think they just never asked, frankly, but.
Private club, you know, I'm sure no one was in there checking.
The document that's attached to the agenda doesn't.
But the request was pretty self-explanatory.
To me. I'm, I'm fine with it if we can do it.
I can't find the exact general law, but I only found the Q, the Q and A and I think that's why I posted that. Then I think I found it, but I think I left the Q and A out there.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with this. It's not a rocking party.
It's directly on the ABCC homepage too when you go to frequently ask questions.
We approved the request by the town, by the Long Meadow Country Club to extend their liquor license to twelve-thirty AM on January first.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? All right, enjoy. The last up, we have discussion of proposed warehouse at three thirty Chestnut Street, East Long Meadow. This is the warehouse, the warehouse that was formerly referred to as the Amazon Warehouse and I keep getting corrected on that. It is a spec warehouse, I guess. And we got a letter from Attorney Michael Pill in Northampton asking if we would like to join the lawsuit that is, has been brought in the land court by the Fields at Chestnut condominium, which is the the condos just to the, if you're looking at the warehouse site to the right. And they filed in the land court and they're asking, Michael Pill is asking if the town of Long Meadow would like to intervene and file and join the lawsuit. I will just start off by saying I have a client in East Long Meadow that is also seeking a project or not as far in the process that will also bring traffic to Long Meadow. We ran it by our town council, C O N, C O U N S E L. And I can continue on. I don't have to accuse myself in this case, but I would, I was advised to make that known to everyone, but I can remain impartial in this. So I will just, as the resident attorney, I will just say in my thought process was I don't know if we have standing if we brought this meeting. I don't know if a court would say that we have, we mean Long Meadow, an interest in, in this because we're not in a butter to the property and we're not, we didn't get a notice of this. We only heard of it incidentally. So I, that, that was my first hesitation. And I also, I won't speak on the likelihood of the lawsuit, but if it was to win, I don't know if Long Meadow would be bringing anything new to it. I think we would have the same, if we did have objections, we would have the same objections as the Fields. So we would be, filing a land court is very, it's intensive and expensive because you have to go to Boston to do everything. So I think it would, it would cost the town a lot of money to get involved in this lawsuit. And there may be constitutional issues, interstate commerce, if we're trying to stop traffic coming through our town. So that's, that's my thought, my thoughts on it. So I, but we brought it on here. I wanted to make sure that we had, everyone had a chance to speak on this if they'd like.
I'll speak on it. I agree with you, Josh. I think primarily because it's not, as much as it will impact the town of Long Meadow, which is through traffic, it's not our fight to fight, A. B, I don't think we can deal with any more legal fees, frankly. You know, we've got gas pipeline, we've got a lawsuit with Grand Meadows over the DPW and, you know, I feel badly that this is going in. I think it will potentially impact us with, with traffic, but I, I wouldn't be surprised whether or not we have standing or not that we don't want to get involved. My first read, my second read and my third read of this was not something I'd want to see us do. My first read, my second read and my third read of this was not something I'd want to see us do.
Yeah, I mean, if it was something from the town of East Long Meadow that they wanted our support, you know, I think I'd, I'd be more willing to be part of this, but, but yeah, this is, I don't see how it includes us, so.
Well, if we were, East Long Meadow would, they're a defendant, we'd be suing East Long Meadow.
Oh, I see. Oh, well, that doesn't sound good either. Because they've been supportive to us in other situations. There was the situation, specifically I remember where they wanted to have trucks moving liquefied natural gas from East Long Meadow through Long Meadow. And that would have been, you know, like a truck every thirty minutes or every hour with carrying, you know, all this fuel. And East Long Meadow was very supportive in being able to, to come, you know. And I, this is the same kind of thing that may happen over on Hazardville, I hope not. But, but East Long Meadow was helpful and so any way we could support them, I don't know, I wouldn't want to sue them.
Yeah, I, I guess it's more complex than that, who would be suing who, but yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
I agree with what you guys were saying as well.
So I think we would just, we would need a motion, we don't have to take any action, it would just be a motion if we wanted to join.
Yeah, I, I think because it was a letter to the select board, I think somebody ought, Josh, you ought to be empowered to send him back a letter and say, thank you for voting, declined to participate.
Okay.
I mean, something like that.
All right, okay.
Wish them good luck.
Okay, if there's nothing on correspondence, we can obtain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? I'm taking a motion to adjourn, he'll second it.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much, good night, everybody.
Okay, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.